Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 7, 2025. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak. Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Novak.
Thank you. All right, well, why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Griscoviac to adopt the agenda. Is there any corrections or changes? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Moves us up to the first item tonight. Proclamation honoring the 50th anniversary of the Coon Rapids Senior Center. How is that even possible? Holy cow. Let's see here. Get back to item one. And... Since 1975, I'll bet all this is in the proclamation, so I'm not going to go through it. I'll wait. Stephanie, what would you like to do? Would you like to come up or would you like to...
Ryan and team would love to come up and have you talk about this wonderful occasion.
All right, well, I'll bring the proclamation along. All right, well, why don't we... Why don't we go ahead and start with the proclamation? The only one up here isn't Stephanie. I was looking for Stephanie for some affirmation. I'll start with the proclamation, and then you can introduce yourselves and talk about what's going on. We have a proclamation honoring the 50th anniversary of the Coon Rapids Senior Center. Whereas, the city of Coon Rapids is proud to recognize and honor the Coon Rapids Senior Center and Super Senior Club for 50 years of dedicated service to adults age 55 and over in our community, and whereas, since its establishment in 1975, the Coon Rapids Senior Center has served as a welcoming place for friendship, lifelong learning, health and wellness, volunteerism, and community engagement, and whereas, the Super Senior Club has supported the senior center through donations, program support, volunteerism, and social engagement, and whereas, the senior center has grown and evolved with the changing needs of older adults, providing a wide range of programs and services that promote independence, dignity, and quality of life, and whereas, the center continues to be a vital resource for seniors and their families, offering transportation, social activities, educational programs, support services, and opportunities for civic involvement, and whereas, the Coon Rapids Senior Center and Super Senior Club have built a strong legacy of compassion, community, and connection, enriching the lives of thousands of residents over five decades, and whereas, the success of the senior center and the programs offered to the community would not be possible without the dedication of the senior services staff, senior center volunteers, community partners, and the ongoing support of the city of Coon Rapids. Now, therefore, the Coon Rapids City Council does hereby proclaim October 9, 2025, as Coon Rapids Senior Center 50th Anniversary Day in the city of Coon Rapids, and encourages all residents to recognize and celebrate the center's remarkable contributions to our community and the dedication of our senior services staff, proclaimed this 7th day of October, 2025. All right, that's a lot.
Thank you. I'm Ryan Gunderson. I'm the recreation supervisor here at the city of Coon Rapids, and I have the great privilege of working with this great team of individuals that put on our programs here at the senior center. For 50 years, the senior center has provided these programs, the last 30 in this building. Cindy Olson here is our program coordinator, who is the mind behind all the different programs that go on at our senior center. Julie Beenick is our events and senior center specialist. She's behind all the transportation and the bus service and the grocery store runs and the van service that gets people to our facility. Jen Graham is our administrative assistant. She's the face of our team at the front desk. She's behind making sure all of our registrations are taken care of. Six times a year, we do registration, and given the first day of each time, it's not unprecedented to do over $15,000 in registrations in one day, and Jen makes that happen with our team and making sure everybody gets into their program. I'll hand it over to Cindy to say a few words, and she'll introduce our super senior guests.
I do want to introduce, we have the vice president of the Super Senior Club is Lori DeForge, and we have Ruth Berg, who is a treasurer, and we are lucky to have a partnership with them. They bring so much to the community. There are so many needs out there, and they do scholarships. They are always looking for ways to improve the community, and we're very proud to be a part of that. And just reiterating what Ryan had said, I'm very lucky with Jen and Julie, and they understand the importance of the senior center to the community. Years ago, it started off in a church, then it was in a fire station, and then it was at family services centers, and look at what we have now. So, we're very fortunate to have this building, and we're so fortunate to have our volunteers that help us do this job. Thank you.
All right. Who am I actually handing this to? Thank you all so much. Thank you.
We're not stating.
Bernice, you're welcome to stay. Even though you're not on the agenda tonight with a parking thing or anything. All right. We're looking to approve the minutes from the September 15 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Butler to approve the minutes from the September 15, 2025 meeting. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Next item, we are now on our consent agenda. And item three. Here we go. Item, this is our first item on the consent agenda, is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. Minnesota state statute requires a list of transactions made by electronic funds transfer be provided to the city council at the next regular meeting after the transaction, so we're looking, we are looking this evening to receive the schedule of electronic payments from September 11, 2025 to October 1, 2025. The second item on our consent agenda is to accept an easement agreement for Project 24-22 Foley Monopole Planning Case 24-18. The attached agreement is valid from November 1, 2025 through August 1, 2026, and it is needed to extend the use of the premises. As work continues on the project, the extension is required to allow additional time for AT&amp;T, and AT&amp;T will be reimbursing us for the cost of the easement extension. So, we're looking to accept the temporary easement with Jeffrey Smith and authorize the execution of the agreement. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve the 2026 SCORE Recycling and Non-Resident Use Agreements and Accept Resolution 25-111, Accepting Funds with Anoka County. Coon Rapids is entitled to receive reimbursement for eligible activities up to $289,586.88, and this amount includes nearly $200,000 for the total population and household allotment for the recycling program, $20,000 dedicated to facility improvements, and just over $70,000 for non-resident use. We are looking to approve the 2026 SCORE Recycling and Non-Resident Use Agreements from Anoka County and authorize staff to execute the agreement for the residential recycling program. Now, let me go back to item six. Next item on the consent agenda is to approve the amendment to, I'm sorry, approve an amendment to the 2025 Crisis Response Grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Justice Programs. This amendment simply extends the grant period from June 30, 2026 to December 31, 2026. There are no additional funds as a result of this amendment, so we're looking to approve the grant amendment extending the 2025 Crisis Response Grant from June 30, 2026 to December 31, 2026. Next item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 25-114, Accepting the 2025 Statewide Health Improvement Program, or SHIP, Grant, and Approving an Agreement with Anoka County. The city of Coon Rapids has been approved to receive up to $3,000 in grant money thanks to a partnership with the Anoka County SHIP program and the state of Minnesota. The funds will be used to pay for a program designed to educate people in our community about the importance of slowing down on park trails and watching out for others. So, we're looking to accept the SHIP grant program, I'm sorry, the SHIP grant funds in terms of the attached memorandum of understanding, MOU, to support the Happy Trails campaign. Item, next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 25-113, calling for a public hearing to vacate drainage and utility easements, 1945 130th Lane Northwest. Paul and Margaret Anderson are property owners at 1945 130th Lane. Several years ago, they bought and combined an adjacent lot along 131st Avenue. The side yard drainage and utility easements were never vacated as part of that combination, and the property owners now want to build a garage but are unable to because the foundation would overlap the unvacated easements. Property requests the council adopt a resolution to begin the process of vacating the drainage and utility easements. A vacation petition may be initiated by the city council upon adoption of a resolution by a four-fifths majority, and Resolution 25-113 calls for a public hearing on November 4, 2025, for council to consider the vacation. So, we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-113, which calls for a public hearing on November 4, 2025, for a vacation of drainage and utility easements. The next item, and that's the last one on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 25-106, Accepting Donations and Business Sponsorships. Between July 1 and September 30, the city received a litany of donations and sponsorships for various city events and activities for which we are very thankful, and the businesses or entities involved that donated were Coon Rapids Fire Department Community Fund, Coon Rapids Police Association, Vending Minnesota, Texas Roadhouse, Raising Canes, Canexus Energy, Chick-fil-A, Target, Chuck and Don's Pet Supplies, Cub Foods, Shanahcler Pizza, Jimmy John's, and Stone Mountain Pet Lodge. We would like to thank all of the donors and businesses that supported events and programs, and we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-106 to accept contributions made to the city between July 1 and September 30, 2025. And that is, I'm sorry, that is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Armstrong. I have one quick question. I realize council has to accept the donations, but there's two park benches on here. Didn't we already accept those at a council meeting, or are these new?
Mr. Mayor, typically...
Well, if they're new, I'll recognize them.
Typically, we do the park benches independent of this, so this may be a duplication, I would suspect.
Okay, okay. I hate to not recognize them if they, this is new, but, well, let's, you know what, just to be sure, just to be sure, we'd like to thank Patrick and Darlene Kennedy and Lacey Hinson, who both, who each put up $700 to donate a park bench for our park bench program, and we thank them for that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. Now, is there any questions or...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
A question for Mr. Hammer. Just as far as the monopole extending AT&amp;T taking longer, is that going to have any impacts to when we finish the project then? Because it seems to be prerequisite. Are there going to be budget carryovers for '26 or any impacts that we'd have to look out for?
No, Councilmember Geisler, as of right now, they're working on the fencing, perimeter work. The materials for the pole are going to be delivered the week of the 20th, I believe, so it's going to take them, it sounds like, two, three days to have the thing up. So, we believe we'll have the permanent monopole constructed by November 1. It's just, we've got to wait to move the facilities over.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. And we are up to item 10. All right, Consider Resolutions 25-102, 25-103, and 25-104, Approving Miscellaneous 2025-2 Assessment Levy. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, following a public hearing on the unopposed assessments, we're asking you to adopt the resolutions on those. As of 4:30, the amount is $80,148.92. We do have three appeals that will be referred to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, which is, who are expected to meet on November 6.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions before I open the public hearing? And to be clear, this is only a public hearing for them to present to us appeals in writing. So, if anybody is here to address or to present a written appeal for these assessments, now is the time. And I'm going to, did I have to say it three times?
How about once more?
How about once more? All right, is anybody here to present a written appeal for our miscellaneous special assessments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look to council to take some action here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I will move that we accept Resolution 25-102, adopting the 2025 Sub-2 Miscellaneous Special Assessments, unopposed for one year. Adopt Resolution 25-103, adopting 2025 Sub-2 Miscellaneous Special Assessments, unopposed three-year, and adopt Resolution 25-104, adopting 2025 Sub-2 Miscellaneous Special Assessments, unopposed five-year.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 11 is to conduct a public hearing and consider approval of non-domestic animal exhibition permit to Little Blues Traveling Zoo. Ms. Lenzmeyer?
Mayor and council, there will be a spooktacular event on October 18 at Riverdale Village, and they will, they would like to include Little Blues Traveling Zoo as a petting zoo, and the city's code requires council conduct a public hearing before considering approval of that permit.
All right, very good. Anybody have any questions on this before we open the public hearing? Nobody's even going to ask if, like, they're bringing really big animals or...
I looked it up.
Lions and tigers and bears, oh my. All right, we'll open the public hearing and on the, as we consider non-domestic animal exhibition to Little Blues Traveling Zoo. Anybody here to address council for the public hearing on the non-domestic animals? All right, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and look to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move we approve a non-domestic animal exhibition permit to Little Blues Traveling Zoo at the spooktacular event located at Riverdale Village, 12701 Riverdale Boulevard, October 18, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Geisler. Do we have the time on that? Okay. October 18. All right, that's fine. Maybe we'll mention it at the end under other business then.
Sounds good.
Any, any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, it's one to five.
One to five?
One to five.
Thank you. Very nice.
Councilmember Carlson?
I have experienced the Little Blues Traveling Zoo.
And you're still traumatized?
It is, no, it was a great day. It's fantastic. It's really, really cool. It's a really nice little event.
So, I think that's, that's the same day as our pumpkin patch in the morning, isn't it? So, families could just make a big old day of this, you know? All right, one to five. Is there any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider Planning Case 25-7, Consider Updated Approval Lot Split and Subdivision Variance, 851 84th Lane Northwest. Candace Tosso? Mr. Patzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're so freshly coiffed, I almost didn't recognize you since the planning commission.
It's still me. You'll know because I'm giving a presentation. All right, so I'm bringing back before you tonight the request for lot split and variance for 851 84th Lane Northwest. So, this was a request for a single-family lot on the cul-de-sac in 84th Lane to be split into two single-family lots, and then a variance to reduce the minimum required lot width at the 40-foot setback by 19 feet. The reason I'm bringing it back before the council is because it was pointed out to staff that the original approval was using the requirements and the ordinance for a subdivision variance, the original approval of the variance for a subdivision variance, which has standards that are no longer up to date with state statute. So, the subdivision variance ordinance that we have in our city code references hardship, which the state did change in statute to be a new set of standards, which are the practical difficulty standards. In order to meet both our own ordinance, which requires a hardship standard be met, as well as the state statute, which requires a practical difficulty be met, staff are requesting that the city council reaffirm the approval of the variance and the findings of fact, as well as the approval of the lot split, affirming that it meets both the hardship and practical difficulty requirements. And just for a little bit of context, the ordinance in the city code for a subdivision variance is different than the ordinance for a standard variance. We did update the standard variance ordinance to reflect the practical difficulty requirement. We did not update the subdivision ordinance when that changed in state statute, which is why they are different right now. So, for the time being, when we have a subdivision variance, we have to show that it meets both the hardship and practical difficulty requirements. Generally, the practical difficulty requirements are seen as being easier to meet than the hardship requirements, so if a variance meets the requirements for hardship, usually it meets the requirements for practical difficulty as well. So, I won't go over the case in depth again, but just remember that this is a request for a residential lot split where the second lot was not able to be made as wide as is required by our ordinance, which is 100 feet wide at the 40-foot setback. So, the applicant was requesting a 19-foot reduction via a subdivision variance. Planning Commission did recommend approval initially, and the city council did approve back in the summer of the original item. In September, the Planning Commission recommended approval once again, affirming both the hardship findings and practical difficulty findings were met, and recommended approval of the lot split as well. So, the hardship findings, which were already met, are generally that it meets the intent of the code, does not diminish public safety, that there's a unique circumstance, that the proposed use is a reasonable use, that the unique circum, or sorry, that the hardship was not created by the actions of the applicant, and that there is an unusual hardship on the property. And then, the practical difficulty standards that the state requires be met for a variance are that the proposed variance is in harmony with the existing neighborhood, that it's within keeping with a comprehensive plan, and that the applicant is proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, the variance requested is the minimum necessary, that the unique circumstances on the, on the lot are not created by the applicant, and that the proposed variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So, with that, staff are recommending that the city council approve the requested variance based on this finding stated in the packet, and as a second motion, adopt Resolution 25-107, approving the proposed lot split second time. And that's all I have for presentation. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Patzner? Mr. Patzner, the aerial overlay that you just had up there about four or five slides ago, that showed that, yeah, that one, 81.13 feet across, is, I can't read the green, is that showing it 40 feet back?
That's correct.
So, that's, that is the setback where the house would be?
Correct.
Okay. And then, would you go forward just one slide first? Okay, one more. There was something about the hardship findings, and I thought it was interesting because you said, as long as it's not caused, it's not, not caused by the... What was it? You were kind of...
Practical difficulty.
Was that, was under the practical difficulty?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The unique circumstance.
All right. Okay. I thought, I thought while you were going through, that maybe you were paraphrasing quickly, that it was something that, as long as it wasn't caused by the homeowners, and I, I wasn't sure what that meant. I probably heard that wrong then.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify a little bit, it is that the requirement that the unique circumstance not be a creation of the applicant, so, for example, the applicant can't request something to be approved, build that item, and then request a variance based on the, you know, this structure that we just built, that was just approved by the city council, now requires me to request a variance in order to do something else I would like to do. Generally, it's seen as if there's a structure that's existing on site and was not built by the applicant, that is an existing circumstance of the site or existing status of the site and would not be considered created by the applicant.
Okay, very good. All right. All right. Yeah, I watched, I watched the planning commission meeting, and I guess I have, I'm still, I still think it's the best thing, the best use of this, highest and best use of land. Let's see here. All right. So, this is, so we're actually looking for action tonight. This isn't an introduction because it's already been to the planning commission. Okay. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Patzner?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion that in Planning Case 25-7, the city council approved the requested variance under city code 11-304.8 and 11-1504.7, based on the findings located within our packet. And in Planning Case 25-7, I move that the city council adopt Resolution 25-107, approving the proposed lot split, subject to the following conditions. The approval of the requested variance as part of Planning Case 25-7. New drainage and utility easements must be dedicated along all new lot lines. Number three, any new development abide by the MRCCA regulations detailed in City Code Section 11-1001, including that a vegetation permit must be approved before any removal of vegetation can occur within the MRCCA bluff impact zone or significant existing vegetative stand.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Geisler and a second by Butler. Is there further discussion on this?
Your Honor, I apologize.
Mr. Brody?
I'll take those separately.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I revise my motion to incorporate just the first item of approving the requested variance.
I apologize that I waited for him to read the entire second motion before I... Second. Second.
Okay, so, so just to clarify, your motion was to approve the requested variance under city code 11-304.8 and 11-1504.7, based on the above stated findings.
Correct.
And the second was from Councilmember Carlson. Do we have any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Counselor Geisler?
And then, Mr. Brody, would you like me to restate the whole thing, or we go?
You just say as the condition stated in the...
Got it. I'll move that in Planning Case 25-7, the city council adopt Resolution 25-107, approving the proposed lot split, subject to the conditions listed in the packet.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Butler, and we should probably say the three stated conditions, correct?
Three stated conditions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item thirteen is to consider adoption of resolution twenty-five dash one oh five, levying the two thousand twenty-five delinquent utilities. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So each year, the city is asked, or the council is asked to approve assessment of delinquent utility balances. In lieu of shutting off water for non-payment, the city chooses to collect delinquent utilities in this manner. The, at the time of the poll here, the total amount is one million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. It's two thousand, five hundred and seventy-six parcels. We will be, we will be taking payment until November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. So typically, what will happen is that we do see the amount to be assessed does drop significantly. And then we will be sending letters out here once the assessment is approved.
Alright. Kind of wondering what you can read into that for trends, you know? Two thousand, five hundred and seventy-six parcels, that's like ten percent of our parcels? Give or take? Alright. Counsel, any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-five dash one oh five, resolution certifying delinquent utilities to taxes. Second.
Motion by Carlson, and a second by Armstrong. Is there discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Question from Ms. Hanson. So, delinquent will be over ninety days past due, but what's the delineating?
So, Councilmember Geisler, our typical process is to take any outstanding balances as of the end of July. And then, so it's a year, yearly look back at that point. So we pull that in, and then any outstanding payment before... So the due date to the county is November fifteenth. So any delinquent amount of that balance that's pulled as of November tenth will get certified. So historically, the amount always starts high. It does include, one of our cycles ends up with just one of their summer bills where they, if they haven't paid it, just because of the timing, but they do tend to drop. Typically, we will end up assessing around sixty percent of the original amount.
Okay, thank you. I actually think this is an incredible service, because there are communities that, maybe not around here, but when I go to national conferences, there are communities that turn water off for non-payment. And it's like, well, we just levy it against the taxes, eventually we're gonna get paid. Alright, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item fourteen is to consider introduction of ordinances amending chapters eight dash one hundred, eight dash five hundred, and sections eight dash nine oh three, eight dash nine oh four, and eight dash nine oh five. Mr. Brody, you're gonna give us the update on this one?
I think it's gonna be Mr. Brown, even though my name is on it. Yes, we didn't rehearse this beforehand, but I think he's right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I can provide a quick overview. You may remember, the council talked about this update in work sessions in both March and September of this year. This is basically a housekeeping update to the code enforcement or property maintenance sections of our city code. The goal is just to kind of update the language, make it clear. So in the event any of our residents receive a courtesy notice or a citation, it's just clear, everything is kind of consolidated into a few sections of the code. So it doesn't include really any substantive changes, primarily just housekeeping.
Alright. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Brown on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Just a general comment that, again, I always thank staff for their efforts to clean this up, to make it easier for folks to understand what we want them to do. So, all of this is always worthwhile, I think, for, we want people to know what we want them to do and make it easy for them to do it. Thank you.
Alright. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, we will consider the amending amendments of chapters eight dash one hundred, eight dash five hundred, and sections eight dash... You know what, I'm gonna read the bottom instead of the top. Sorry. We are going to consider the ordinances amending chapters eight dash one hundred nuisances, eight dash five hundred, maintenance of vegetation and landscaping, and sections eight dash nine oh three, eight dash nine oh four, and eight dash nine oh five, storage of wood. We're gonna consider those introduced, and we will be readdressing these at a future council meeting. Item fifteen is to consider planning case twenty-five dash twelve. Consider a comprehensive plan amendment for twenty-eight thirty-one, one hundred thirteenth Avenue Northwest, City of Coon Rapids. Mr. Patzner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members have combined fifteen and sixteen into the same presentation, because they regard the same lot. But this is the old fire station three, where the city has requested proposals for potential single-family home development from developers. And coming out ahead of accepting a proposal, city staff are requesting that the property be re-guided in the comprehensive plan and rezoned to be the correct comprehensive plan land use guidance and zoning for single-family homes. So it's a two-acre site under the three-acre threshold for a PUD, so a rezoning to something other PUD, other than a PUD, will be required for this. Proposals for single-family homes for this property would generally be six, or sorry, seven or eight single-family home lots, depending on the arrangement. So what's being requested by staff is to re-guide this from institutional in the twenty forty comprehensive plan, which doesn't allow for residential development, to low-density residential, which would allow for residential development at three to five units per acre, and then a request to rezone the property from MDR, or modern density residential in the bottom half, and low-density residential two in the top half, to low-density residential three, which is the new zoning district that was created this year. And that would be for the entire property. So staff are proposing a rezoning to LDR three in order to properly utilize the property for single-family homes and have efficient use of the space. So just a reminder, the LDR three zoning district has a minimum lot area of seventy-two hundred square feet, fifty percent lot coverage, a minimum lot width of sixty feet, minimum lot depth of a hundred and twenty feet, and then twenty-five foot front and rear, and seven and a half foot side setbacks for residential use. So just a mock-up of what the property could look like under LDR three district standards. And it is worth noting that under almost any arrangement of property, one or possibly two variances would be required. The main reason for that is the depth between one hundred thirteenth Avenue to the south and one hundred thirteenth Lane, which runs through the property, is just under two hundred and forty feet. So it would not be possible to have two one hundred and twenty-foot deep lots. So there likely would be a variance request along with any plating of this property. However, this is just a visual to show what seven lots on the property could look like. There is a drainage and utility easement running north and south through the middle of the property that's represented by dotted blue lines. It's a thirty-foot wide easement, I believe. And then, a second mock-up showing what eight lots could look like. So that northeastern lot south of one hundred thirteenth Lane could be divided into two, and then the northwestern lot south of one hundred thirteenth Lane could be reduced in size a little bit. And then that northern lot, north of one hundred thirteenth Lane, it might be close to the one hundred and twenty-foot depth. So that's where a second variance may be requested by a potential future applicant looking to plat the property. So with this, all staff are requesting is that the council approve the resolution re-guiding the property, and then introduce the ordinance rezoning the property. And this is just to get the entitlements in place for a developer whose proposal the city may accept for residential development. So I did list recommended findings of fact for the comp plan amendment and for the rezoning ordinance, and these findings are basically the same for each. And these are listed in the packet, and I'd be happy to discuss these further on requests, but I do want to move along. So with this, I have a recommended motion for item fifteen, which is a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash one oh eight. And then for item sixteen, I have a recommendation to introduce the ordinance rezoning the property. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Patzner on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler?
I move that in planning case twenty-five dash twelve, the city council adopt resolution twenty-five dash one oh eight, approving the proposed comprehensive plan amendment based on the following findings. One, the proposed amendment would not have an adverse impact on the surrounding area. Two, the proposed amendment is compatible with adjacent land uses and zoning. And three, the proposed amendment is consistent with future land use guidance and policies of the twenty forty comprehensive plan. Second.
Motion by Butler, and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler?
I just want to thank staff for working on this. You know, I know this was sort of an awkward property. It's kind of hard to figure out what would fit there. We do have a housing affordability problem in Coon Rapids. I think every little bit helps, and I just want to thank staff again for finding this opportunity.
Alright, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Item sixteen is the ordinance rezoning to LDR three. This is the introduction only. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Patzner on the, on this? If not, he'll go ahead.
I, just to reiterate to the public, this is exactly why we created LDR three, was for these little tiny infills, to maximize their value to the city and to its residents. So this is a good spot to try it out, make sure, see how it works with our developer friends.
Yeah, that's a good point, because when you're in a primarily developed community, really all you've got is little infills here and there. Alright, any other questions of Mr. Patzner or comments? Hearing none. In planning case twenty-five dash thirteen, we will consider the ordinance rezoning the subject property based on the following three findings introduced. Is that good, or do you want me to read those? It's good, alright. That was item sixteen. Item seventeen, got a big, big real estate sale here. Mr. Brown?
Yes, eleven hundred dollars. This is a point one one acre remnant parcel. If you can kind of picture the berm along Crooked Lake Boulevard, where it runs along Highway ten. Back about twenty-five years ago, when the city had realigned that street, a number of properties were purchased. Most of the remnants were sold to adjacent property owners, for whatever reason this one was not, perhaps because the neighbor at the time wasn't really interested in it. We were approached just recently by the current owner of property at one-two-three-three-nine Gladiola Street. He is interested in purchasing this. So the council's asked to introduce the ordinance authorizing the sale. Once that ordinance is considered for adoption in a couple of weeks, you will also consider a purchase agreement.
Alright, thank you. It appears there's only one little remnant left there, and it's probably like four feet or something. Alright. Alright, anybody have any questions of Mr. Brown on this? If not, we will consider the ordinance authorizing the sale of real estate at one-twenty-three X X Gladiola Street, introduced. And item eighteen is to consider introduction of an ordinance establishing fees for two thousand and twenty-six. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So, in front of you today is an ordinance to establish fees for certain, establish, an ordinance for certain fees. Our city code calls for some fees to be established by ordinance and some fees to be established by resolution. For ease of presentation, we are presenting them all in one fee schedule here. So for two thousand and twenty-six, what we did was take a look at our existing fees and then applied a four percent adjustment factor that relates to our proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-six. If the amounts were rounded up enough, then a recommendation to change that fee is being made. Some of the notable ones, business licensing, we do have some fees that are proposed to increase by that four percent. The state is taking over cannabis license fees, so we are transitioning out of the THC license fees are being phased out. There are no changes to building inspection or permit fees, except for an increase in the refundable escrow for new residential construction. We'll see recommending slight increases in golf and recreational fees in terms of building rentals. Rental licensing, we're proposing to add a fee to encourage timely renewals. And then the fees that are most impactful to residents would be the utility fees. So over the last few years, we've done a lot of long-range planning related to our waters, who are in stormwater, making sure that funds, making sure that we have enough revenue to cover, you know, significant capital investments into our community. So for two thousand and twenty-six, along with those plans, we're proposing an overall eight percent increase in water rates. That would translate to a two-dollar increase in the base fee per quarter for residential, or actually, it's for all accounts. And then the multifamily per unit per quarter would increase seventy cents. And then the usage rates increased by twenty cents, twenty-five cents, and thirty cents per thousand gallons. Sewer fees were proposing a five percent increase. That would translate to a one dollar and seventy-five cent increase on the base fee per quarter, and then usage fees would increase by fifteen cents per one thousand gallons. We did see an increase in the disposal charges from Met Council, significantly, a couple hundred thousand. So an increase in the usage fee is justified to help pay for that fee. And then stormwater, we're requesting a five percent increase. That would be, for a single-family residential fee, would be increased from eighteen dollars and forty-eight cents to nineteen dollars and forty cents per quarter. Overall, an average residential user would see an increase of forty-six dollars and eighteen cents over the year, so less than five dollars a month. The second item on the agenda would be to set a public hearing for certain fees related to liquor. So that would be the off-sale, on-sale, three-point-two malt liquor licenses, the tavern license, and the on-sale intoxicating liquor license, the micro-distillery cocktail room license, and the brewer taproom. Council's asked, set the public hearing for October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
The one outlier on here seems to be the on-sale intoxicating liquor license going up five hundred dollars. Is that, is there a reason, is there, is that more labor-intensive, or?
Mr. Mayor, that number is bigger because that license fee is bigger.
It's just, it's the inflationary piece, but...
But is it percentage?
Percentage. Our costs to manage and conduct compliance inspections, and all of the staff-related requirements for managing an on-sale license have gone up, and will go up next year. So that's our proposal. We're open for conversation, of course.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler?
I had the same exact thought, looking at this. I appreciate that it went up four percent, just like all the other proposed revenues. And I appreciate why overall that license is substantially more than anything else in the book. I don't think there's any business license anywhere close to that, because there's not as much enforcement. But I was thinking to myself, if there's any way we could provide even just a slightly smaller increase, it might be worth it, given that, my understanding is historically, it's always gone up about four percent. That does start compounding as you're looking at eleven thousand, twelve thousand. And, you know, I'm not saying we should just keep it flat, but, you know, even if it's four hundred instead of five hundred or three fifty, I would love to have that conversation if folks are interested.
I always have that Walmart thing, you know, if you can just get it below that twelve thousand, you know? Eleven nine, it just doesn't sound as much, you know?
Eleven nine ninety, you know?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
And I know we're just introducing tonight, so just making some comments. You know, I guess I, personally, I watch the state warn notice list, and I just have it feed into my inbox, which tells you who's closing and how many people are getting laid off. And that list has been about three times busier this year than last year. So I have concerns, not so much about, you know, I think the water, the utility stuff, we have a lot of deep grounding of how those costs get to there. But from the business licensing perspective, I worry about putting additional pressure when it's not going so great right now. And, you know, the increases, while they will generate some money, don't generate a ton of money, but can mean a lot to a business, especially if they're already being pinched on supply side, especially if they're being pinched on lower traffic. So I have some questions on the one-time licenses. I think it makes sense keeping those up, things that we do once, planning things, those kinds of activities. But the annual uplift on, for, when, you know, every business, it just gets more expensive every year, which contributes... every year, which contributes to more and more. So, I, I do have some concern about just keeping the press there when it's hard right now, and, and it's harder than it has been. And I don't know how much I want to contribute to that right now. So, that's, I, I don't have a specific adjustment in mind, I don't have a specific number. But I do have just concerns about pushing in that space currently.
How much can that, how much can we wiggle that number and still have a, consider this introduced? I mean, it's just an introduction tonight, we're gonna, we'll move on it at the next meeting. But if between now and then, we think, you know, boy, if that was eleven-seven-fifty or, or something, and, and there was a consensus, is that something that we could, we could do then, or would have to, would we have to reintroduce?
I think, given the fact that we would move, be moving down, and the changes probably aren't going to be dramatic, one way or the other, even if we wanted to move up, that we'd probably, okay, leaving it as-is, that we consider it introduced tonight, and then we can adopt it even with some small tweaks at the next, next meeting.
Okay.
Because, and, and essentially, most of it, I presume, the fees are going to stay as they are introduced.
Councilor Butler.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd be interested, too, in just seeing sort of what our projections are for the cost of enforcement next year, because I, I agree, the cost of enforcement's going to go up. I, I don't necessarily want to just say we're going to keep it flat with no increase. But seeing those options of, oh, if we raised it a hundred and fifty bucks, maybe we're short for enforcement, or if we raise it to four hundred, are we still okay, but maybe not as close as we'd like? And, you know, we, we would have a bit of time in the next couple of weeks to get that information.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I just know, as, those guys, when they, when they write that check every year, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big check to write, and when...
We need a drink.
Right? All right. Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, hearing none. We will, we will consider an ordinance to establish fees effective January first, two thousand and twenty-six, introduced. And we will set a public hearing for October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five at seven P.M. regarding fee increases for certain alcoholic beverage licenses. And that would include those, right? So, that would be an opportunity for...
Adjustments.
Adjustment and for discussion.
That's correct, Mayor and Council. We will also be notifying current license holders of the proposed increase, so we'll see if there's any feedback related to the proposal.
Thank you. Okay, so that's introduced. Item nineteen is to consider resolution twenty-five dash one-one-zero, amending the two thousand and twenty-five fee schedule to add registration fees for cannabis businesses. As long as...
Mayor and Council members, as noted in the memo, the Office of Cannabis Management has announced their intent to begin licensure of low potency hemp, what we have called in our code THC. That license period opened, or application period with the state opened October one will end at the end of October, and that would mean that the licensing then falls away from the city and goes to OCM. So, now what we need is a registration fee. We're allowed to require them to register and collect that hundred and twenty-five-dollar registration fee, which is the state's offering for our compliance requirements that we need to do. The other thing staff is proposing is a temporary cannabis event permit. We did not add that yet. It needs to be added, because it is something that I believe will be coming along, because they're starting to get those licenses organized and ready at the state level. Staff suggests a fee of twenty-five hundred for those temporary events to cover all of the potential enforcement situations we could incur. I'll answer any questions.
Will that cover the overtime, do you think, for having a cannabis event in town? Will they, will they have buses, or how are they going to get them home?
One of the conditions of our, under the cannabis ordinance that we did enact is that there is no use at the cannabis event.
Really?
No onsite consumption is how it reads.
Thank you.
Oh, interesting.
Doesn't mean they're gonna, I don't know, but...
All right. Councilor Geisler.
So, Mr. Brody, the, a temporary cannabis event is defined in the, in that ordinance, in the cannabis ordinance, then?
There's a state statute regarding it, as well as our ordinance, when we enacted our cannabis ordinance, that addresses it, the requirements to get a permit, things like that, the conditions on that permit.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilor Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash one-ten, amending the city's adopted two thousand and twenty-five fee schedule.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Griscoviac. Is there, just, wasn't it, Mr. Butler?
Yeah.
All right. It was Butler. Okay. A motion by Carlson, second by Butler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Butler.
I'd just like to express, too, to our staff, that as we're thinking about feedback to the legislature, it would be good to give feedback that at least having some sort of exception for inflationary increases in this fee makes sense. It feels really weird that we're discussing four percent inflation for business fees, and then the next item is a hundred and twenty-five bucks, and that's it.
Mayor and Council, that certainly something we can raise as part of our legislative platform, as council may recall, we were supposed to also receive some cannabis aid, which was taken off the table this past session. It was, you know, here and gone too quickly. So, you know, the, the whole area around cannabis and the adult-use cannabis law will evolve, I'm sure, over the next several years, and there'll be opportunities, I'm sure, to provide that feedback.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. All right. Councilor Geisler.
Since we're talking, I think it'd be great to make sure we collect what our actual enforcement fees are, what our times are, to give hard facts back of if we got a hundred and twenty-five dollars and it cost a hundred and twenty-five plus X and Y, providing that back is pretty concrete information of we're not getting it back, so.
Yep.
We'd have to be mindful.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Griscoviac.
So, if I'm reading this right, the, the, the fee is just a flat hundred and twenty-five dollars for, for cannabis. Is this similar to, I mean, it's eleven thousand, six hundred dollars for liquor.
Well, this is just our registration fee. The state gets the license fee, correct?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Griscoviac, yes. So, we were allowed to do licensure through the city, and we had set our fee the same as our intoxicating liquor, because similar compliance concerns and costs. And now that goes away, and yes, there's a license fee through the state for the low-level hemp, and the state only allows us to do what's called a registration, and they set the, the allowed amount at one-twenty-five per year.
So, this is it? Our, our police have to, you know, verify and, and check and make compliance checks and, you know, figure out, is it actually low potency or high potency, and a hundred and twenty-five dollars to cover all that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Griscoviac, that's correct. The situation is, as City Manager Stemwaddle mentioned, that was with the understanding that because we were not allowed to charge an actual license fee, we were going to receive proceeds, right? And now that's off the table, so it would seem fair that we have a conversation about making an amendment to that and allowing us to control the license fee, but we shall see.
Okay. And I think, to Council, Geisler's point, we need to keep track of what this is costing the city and our taxpayers, and then lobby the legislature to reimburse us or do something.
Yeah, correct. The compliance check alone is a hundred and twenty-five on, it's not going to cover it, so.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second for, to adopt resolution twenty-five dash one-one-zero, I'm sorry, twenty-five dash one-ten, amending the city's adopted two thousand and twenty-five fee schedule. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item twenty is to consider a memorandum of understanding with Anoka Hennepin District eleven for School Resource and Prevention Program Officer Services. Mr. Steiner.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. Yeah, before you tonight is the request to approve the memorandum of understanding with a long word for SRO, for School Resource Officer now. And that's for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. We're already back in school, we're running a little behind here, which isn't all that uncommon, working out some contract language and whatnot that still is being tweaked from what happened a few years ago with the School Resource Officer Program. But this will provide funding in about three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars for School Resource Officer Services for the Coon Rapids High School, Coon Rapids Middle School, Northdale Middle, Northdale Middle School, River Trail Learning Center, and the Compass Programs. It also includes money for teaching dare, which we do at all the elementary schools, the public elementary schools, rather. And, as you know, we have a long history with the School Resource Officer Program, maybe the longest in the state, depends who you ask, I think, a couple of people claim that, but we've been there since nineteen seventy-four, and teaching dare since nineteen eighty-nine. So, it's our recommendation that the council approve the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six memorandum of, of understanding with the school district.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Carlson.
This one's kind of near and dear to me. Make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six memorandum of understanding for School Resource and Prevention Program Officer Services with Anoka Hennepin School District eleven.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
No, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Carlson, go ahead.
These are great programs, and it's not just the, like, immediacy, too, some of the relationships that you build and such, like, with the kids. It's really incredible, and when you look at, you know, with the SRO program, going back to nineteen seventy-four with Pete Bieber, yeah, I just, like I said, it's about the relationships and the kind of that small-town feel in the schools, where everybody knows the school cop, kind of a thing. It's, it's really a good thing. I was one of those people for twenty-seven years. Between dare and SRO, it's just such a valuable, those are valuable programs, not just for whatever the kids learn at the moment, but just for those relationships.
All right. Mr. Mayor. Councilor Armstrong.
I just wa, I just want to echo that. If you, if you go to any of the, the high school football games, or any of the sporting events where, where law enforcement needs to, to be there, a lot of our city events, et cetera, you see kids from middle school, high school, coming up and, and talking to these officers like they're, they're buddies. And if somebody doesn't think that these SROs don't make a difference, they need to go out and, get out in the public and look, because they make a fantastic difference.
Agreed. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion passes. Thank you, Chief Steiner. Item twenty-one is to consider resolution twenty-five dash one-oh-nine, accepting grant funds from Coon Creek Watershed District and approve water quality cost share agreement. Want me to just read the details, or Mr. Hammer, you want to do this one?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll give you a brief overview. It's yet another request for some water quality grants through the Coon Creek Watershed District. We received some complaints or concerns about just some, some channel issues right in the, the manufactured home park just south of Egrit Boulevard there. It, it's on Woodcrest Creek, it feeds right into Coon Creek. It appears as if some people have taken liberties with how they're grading and what they're doing. So, we're going to work with that property owner on, on making sure this sticks in the long run. We estimated the cost around fifty-two thousand, so we applied for what they would match, up to fifty percent. So, we do have funds in our stormwater utility for maintenance of ditch channels for this, and we thought we'd supplement our funds. So, we applied for the grant, and we're successful. So, I'm happy to answer questions about this.
All right, excellent. Any questions, Mr. Hammer, on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Butler.
I move that we adopt the resolution twenty-five dash one-oh-nine, accepting grant funds from the Coon Creek Watershed District and authorize execution of the water quality cost share agreement.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Geisler. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item twenty-two is to consider resolution twenty-five dash one-fifteen, terminating participation in the North Metro Regional Street Maintenance JPA. Mr. Hammer, you don't play well with others, or what's going on?
Mr. Mayor, Council, that's, that's not the case at all. I, I think this, this consortium, this joint powers agreement has overrun its course through evolution. It, it, it has turned into something far beyond what was established to be, and quite frankly, it's probably part of our doing in trying to add more into a program, but trying to administer that for multiple cities, and the time constraints it puts on us for opting out and awarding contracts, not to mention, we're one of the biggest users of the program, so the economies of scale have kind of lost their luster. So, it's really the time commitment and, and the, the work we put into it, and the, the liability that comes with something like that. We, we've been trying to work with that group to, to keep it going, and, and it will still continue, and we're happy to assist them in any way we can. But I think for the, the benefit of the city and for what we do, we're going to continue to do the program, but we're going to do it in-house, and we'll be able to be a little more efficient with how we do that. So, it, it's not an easy choice, but I think it's the right choice, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Yeah, it really became a very large thing to maintain, and this makes sense. Any questions, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash one-fifteen, terminating participation in the North Metro Regional Street Maintenance JPA.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there discussion on this? Mr. Mayor. Councilor Geisler.
I just wanted to, since it's not overly visible, we discussed this quite a bit at a work session, and why we're doing it, and what its costs, and what the benefits are to the city. So, we have quite a bit of background going into this of why we're doing it, it's not just snapping out. But I appreciate Mr. Hammer and his staff walking through basically the cost-benefit analysis, and I hope the other communities can figure it out to keep getting a benefit from it, but we need to look after Coon Rapids first, so.
Councilor Butler.
That was Griscoviac.
Oh, the Councilman Griscoviac.
We saw him.
Well, you're so far away, I don't know.
I moved closer. No, I want to basically echo the same thing. We talked about this a couple of times in work session, but I just wanted, you know, everyone to be aware, we're not, the, the regional street program isn't being abolished, we're just stepping away from it. So, it's not like we've left all those other communities where we've been lead agency all those years, you know, high and dry. It's still going to be there for them, we're just, we're just moving out of it right now. Just wanted to be clear.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Armstrong.
Yep. I will echo that as well. With a lot of these contracts, when they've been around for years, or agreements, when they've been around for years and years and years, sometimes it's difficult to step away from the legacy-type stuff and, and reevaluate it. So, kudos to you for recognizing this and, and for looking out for the city's best and interest.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item twenty-three is to consider an agreement and resolution twenty-five dash one-sixteen, budget amendment for a failing retaining wall. Mr. Hammer.
Yes, Mayor, Council. This is a, a wall that has been in rough shape for a little while. We've kind of been keeping an eye on it, hoping that either through some redevelopment project, or a street reconstruction project, that we may be able to address it with, with the funding source. We've noticed chunks now started to fall into the roadway, and, and there's really not a lot of room between this wall and the roadway. So, it's becoming a hazard now that we need to resolve. But kudos to our staff again, they, they really looked at, you know, do we just rebuild it in its current configuration? There's no room to build it, we would have to close the road down. So, we've been working with some area residents that we can stage on their property. One resident with the agreement here has, has been so gracious to allow us to grade it back, to reduce the height of that wall in exchange for just planting some trees and, and doing some screening. So, it improves his ability to maintain it, it, it gives us a smaller wall, less to maintain in the long run. It, it's a lesser cost from what the original estimates were, but I, I don't want to go too much longer and end up with concerns with, you know, failing wall and roadway and potential for damage and harm. So, I'm requesting that budget amendment to get the work done. They're, they're hot to trot and ready to go as, as soon as we allow this to move forward, if it moves forward. And again, appreciation to the property owner for really working with us and coming up with a solution that's kind of good for both parties. So, I'm recommending approval of the budget amendment, as well as the agreement, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Hammer there?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Hammer, are we maintaining the materials, because it's kind of a, like a stacked stone wall, isn't it? Or are we changing it, or converting it to something else?
Councilmember Geisler, it's just gonna be a boulder wall now, really just some very large boulder wall, so it'll go away from that stacked, um, configuration.
Less likely to fail then, too?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Looking at that area, first, um, there's a lot of property on Coon Rapids Boulevard between there and Ninety-fourth that is ripe for redevelopment. Um, it, it seems to me like it would make sense to redevelop that in conjunction with a project like this, or vice versa. Um, the, uh, the, uh, wall itself is that stacked stone, it seems like there's just one area where it's starting to crumble from, uh, forces from the other side. Uh, are you gonna redo the entire wall, or are you just gonna do that's sections where we're having issues? That's my first question.
Councilmember Griscoviac, the, the plan is to do the entire wall. It, it, if you just try to chunk it where the break is, you still have to dig back, you still have all the tree impacts, um, and, and being able to reduce the height of the wall will also be beneficial for us.
And then, I mean, are we gonna be happy with a boulder wall right there when that's redeveloped? Is that gonna be the right type of wall to have for, for redevelopment? I'm getting nods over here.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's what everybody does. When you look at the, the really nice landscape projects, it's the big boulders, you know, it seems.
Um, and the other thing-
That's probably a question for you, Mr. Hammer. I was just jumping ahead.
Well, we found, aside from the aesthetics, the price was less, and, and it, it, it gets away from the stacking and the tiebacks and all the engineering that goes with that extra work. I mean, ideally, quite frankly, I'd like to vacate the roadway and allow redevelopment to occur in between there, that hope for, promise for youth or something that, you know, that, that's, that's a consideration that could be there, but there's just too many property owners, and how long are you gonna wait? And, and it's, it's only a matter of time, so that's why we want to move this forward now.
Okay. No, that's a good point on maybe vacating the roadway, because I wouldn't think there'd be very many cars passing through there in any one day. And then lastly, I did look at this because I, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar budget amendment, this late in the year, kind of jumps out at me. But, um, is, what was my question on that? Oh, the, uh, the maintenance of that area in general back there, doesn't look like we've ever done any maintenance to that wall. There's, there's trees growing out of the wall, there's shrubs, it doesn't look like the city, it, I'm surprised it's even city property, the way it has been neglected. So, is there gonna be, uh, I mean, we're gonna maintain it once we rebuild it, so it's gonna look decent? Another concern of mine.
Yeah, Councilmember Griscoviac, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to talk to the, the property owners out there. The, the one in particular with this access agreement is, is very clear, that, you know, we'll plant some native vegetation in there, we'll put up some trees, um, that way he has his screening, he's able to go out and still enjoy his backyard and have something that's maintainable. A little further to the west, it, it tails out, uh, on that, on that adjacent lot, so we were able to handle that just within the existing right-of-way. And this, this was a, a strange scenario in that it's not platted, it's part of an auditor subdivision, so we don't have dedicated right-of-way, it was acquired over time for the roadway. So, we've already got a narrower corridor, and, and that's why I think some of the neglect has been there. Not to mention, the overhead power lines are directly above it, and, and trying to, they, they go in and just chop down what's good for them, and the property owners just don't go back there, cause they like the full lush growth and the, the screening. So, this, this will kind of open the area up a little bit, but, um, the, the idea is to make it easier for them to maintain such that everything up above there. So, we're responsible for the wall, that is for sure, um, but the, the mowing and, and the maintenance and the landscaping component is the resident's responsibility.
Got it. And then lastly, a question, maybe just to follow up for the, for the Council. I mean, we're looking at our revolving construction fund, it's getting, kind of, getting down there a little bit. Uh, is everyone comfortable with using the money out of that revolving construction fund for this, or should be in the twenty-twenty-seven budget? Yeah, twenty-twenty-seven, cause we're, we can't.
Cause we've already done twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I, I'm good with it. I mean, I think this emergency repairs are, are things you pull out of that, but, um, that, that neighborhood is kind of an unusual neighborhood, it was kind of an orphaned neighborhood that was primarily owned by one, one company that originally was planning, they were hoping to develop the whole neighborhood. So, most of those were rental properties for over thirty years, and it wasn't until two thousand eighteen that they started selling off all their homes and bringing it back to single-family ownership. We didn't even know what to do with the street reconstruction, however many years ago, cause there was no curbs or anything in there. So, I was like, how do you, you know, how are you gonna redo this? But, so, yeah, so there, there's gonna be some unusual things, I think, that'll pop up now that, now that it's primarily owner-occupied again.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I'm also good with it, given the situation. If something comes up, then something comes up. We'll figure it out.
Okay. You can feel, you can vote no. All right, any other questions of Mr. Hammer on this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Butler?
I move that Council approve the access agreement and adopt resolution twenty-five dash one-one-six, amending the twenty-twenty-five revolving construction fund budget to complete emergency replacement of a failing retaining wall.
Second.
Motion by Butler, and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Did, for Mr. Hammer, I should have asked this before the motion, but did we get a quote to just try to do the repairs? Because either there's a stacking, you know, flat rocks, we have them further down on Coon Rapids Boulevard, the same type of rocks, they just, you know, stack up, and these are cemented together. Did we get a quote to try to repair the failing section?
Councilmember Griscoviac, we received multiple quotes in, in looking at it any different way, but there's a crack right down the middle of that wall, so, so you can't just fix half of it and tie it back in, because the wall supports itself. And now that the, the wall has failed, you have to, anything you do has to get tied back into what's around it, and, and because of that vegetation, and because of that small area, what, once you open up the center, you're basically excavating eighty percent of it.
Make it a lot harder for me to vote no.
I, I also think, because you, the commercial properties you were talking about between Ninety-fourth and Coon Rapids Boulevard, something ultimately has to happen there, and for, for, for this to actually be a nice-looking wall now, I think actually would, would help that project, but.
And I will add that those are the properties that were agreeable also to allow us to stage on their site, such that the roadway doesn't get closed and we're able to access it. So, they, they've been good as well, just to allow us to, to stage on their site.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the motion carries unanimously, Mr. Hammer.
Thank you.
All right, we're up to the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic this evening? Anybody here for open mic? All right, we'll close that, and we're, I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we're up to other business. And we've got a open house coming up Saturday. I can't believe it's already time for that, it's like, oh my gosh, where did the year go? Fire Department Open House on Saturday, October eleventh, there it is, look at that. Fire Station Three, Thirty-one Fifty, One Hundred and Eleventh Avenue, this is right across from the Anoka Ramsey Community College on Mississippi Boulevard. And, uh, yeah, ten a.m. to noon, uh, meet the firefighters, fire, see the fire trucks, uh, they usually have that, the, um, helicopter come in, um, emergency vehicles, safety demos, Sparky the Fire Dog, spray a real fire hose, as opposed to a fake hose, I don't know. And then the, uh, oh, and then the police are getting involved with the K-9 team. Nice. Um, it really is a great event, and kids, kids love it, and people, you know, come out and see where, where a lot of your, um, property tax money goes, you know? Stuff is expensive. Other business, um, Rocky's Pumpkin Patch, we have a meeting in between now and then?
Nope.
Nope?
Oh, actually.
There it is.
October eighteenth.
Octo, Saturday, October eighteenth, ten a.m. to one p.m. at Sand Creek Park. Every child receives a pumpkin, they'll be playing musical chairs, prizes, candy, inflatables, face painting, games, free photo booth, trick-or-treating, trick-or-treating, and it's close together, I mean, it's like tent-to-tent-to-tent, and there's a lot of candy there. So, it's, it's a target-rich environment for trick-or-treating. Um, so, make sure you come out to that, and you probably want to get out there early, cause it gets to be a pretty good lineup around, uh, when, when it opens up. Um, yeah, and that's October eighteenth, ten to one, Sand Creek Park, Rocky's Pumpkin Patch.
And then you're gonna wanna zip over to Riverdale right after that.
And then you're gonna want to zip over to see, over to Riverdale for the, uh, Tiny Tim, exotic animals, or whatever that was?
Something like that, spectacular.
All right. Any other business coming for council?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, and a second by Butler to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.